I invite everyone to, for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Could we have roll call, please, Ms. Abbey?
Yes. Filkins?
Here.
Bunce?
Here.
Bosher?
Here.
Fent?
Here.
And Putvin?
Here. Thank you.
They call you?
Oh, new guy.
The new guy. New guy.
What's his face?
Rice.
Here. Here.
Thank you.
I kept listening for his.
Me too, I'm going.
Very good catch. Okay.
Welcome, Dale.
Everybody had a chance to look over stuff, so right now I just need an approval of this evening's agenda again for October 25th, 2021, please.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Mr. Fent, Mr. Bunce.
Perfect. Rice?
You say approve yes or no?
Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Bosher?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Filkins?
Yes.
Putvin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before I get into the approval of the July 26, 2021, meeting minutes, for our public that follows us, we were not here in August and/or September, so that's why you missed us, because we were not here.
They weren't here.
Now that I got that off the plate. So now I would entertain approval of the July 26, 2021.
And I've read them through, and I approve the minutes of the 26th.
Then I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Fent.
Bunce and Fent?
Yes.
Okay. Fent?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Filkins?
Yes.
Putvin?
Yes.
Rice?
I probably shouldn't comment since I didn't read them.
That's true.
Just say yeah, because you're a good guy.
Yes, you did. It's all good.
And Bosher?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Abby. Okay, this evening we have a public hearing pertaining to an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for storage facilities. Having read that, I'm now going to go to Mr. Wallace for this.
Thank you. Kind of an unusual request that we don't usually take. It's somewhat rare to have an applicant asked for a zoning text amendment, but it does happen from time to time. Michael Blackmere of 2233 Sunnyside Drive in Cadillac, Michigan, who's also the owner of the Pines Bowling Alley, has, I guess, managed two ball fields that were to the rear of his property for quite a number of years. And in recent times, apparently, they have not produced the expected revenue of people attending the games using the Pines business. And he's been looking for an avenue to increase revenue on his property. And so what he is wanting to see if the Planning Commission would consider is to allow a storage facility to be considered under a special use permit in the TS2 district. So this, what we're doing tonight, would not approve the project. It would only create a pathway for the project to be considered. But that said, it's still important to consider what you would create a pathway for, regardless of the application. So right now, when he came in, he first inquired about a storage facility in general. And I told him that, given the intent of the TS2 district, that I didn't feel that a general storage facility would meet the intent of the district and really shouldn't be permitted. He then said, well, what if we construe the storage facility or design the storage facility to be more tourism-related? In other words, he indicated to me that a number of people come to him and say, well, I just don't have a place to put my boat. I don't have a place for, whether it's jet skis or pontoon or whatever it is. A lot of people don't have the capacity at their vacation home to store those facilities, and he thinks that there would be a market for that. And so I said, well, if there's a way that we can find to structure an ordinance change that would still meet the intent of the zoning district, and that was included in my memo to you, I can read it briefly. It says, "The TS1 and TS2 tourist service districts are designed to accommodate those activities necessary to service tourist needs, including retail activities, tourist accommodations, parks, recreation, and public uses of general interest to the tourist." So that is the intent of the district. So over the course of a few weeks, we corresponded and drafted a proposed amendment to the TS2 district that would add an item to the uses that could be considered by a special use permit. And I'll call that amendment up here in a minute. And here is that amendment. It would add a subsection 6 to section 46, 459 of the zoning ordinance. And the item would be called recreational vehicle, watercraft, and auto storage. The specific equipment that could be included in that would include camper trailers, motorhomes, off-the-road or all-terrain vehicles, snowmobiles, travel trailers, utility trailers of two axles or less, boats, jet skis, autos, and Class 1 through 3 non-commercial vehicles, which are basically pickup trucks. These last two items are not generally considered tourist-related, and hence you might want to give separate consideration to those. But they have been approached by people who they claim would like to store some higher-end vehicles in a protected storage unit. And so since the majority of the items in there were oriented to tourism, I allowed those to be added, but it's up to the Planning Commission where you want to go with that. And then I also wrote into the addition that there would be some regulations that would govern this particular use if it was applied for. And I can just read through those briefly. They're all important. "All storage buildings and outdoor storage areas shall be enclosed by a fence a minimum of six feet in height. Outdoor storage areas shall be screened by a fence or natural vegetation to a height of six feet. The main entrance to the site shall be designed and constructed with a crash gate or other suitable emergency access as approved by the police and fire departments for emergency vehicles. Outdoor storage shall be limited to motorhomes, camper trailers, and enclosed utility trailers." So the entire list can't be stored externally, just those three items that are mentioned. "All indoor or outdoor storage areas must be located a minimum of 200 feet from either the M-55 or the M-115 right-of-way lines." So it wouldn't become a use that could be considered right on highway frontage. It would have to be set back that distance from the highways. "All access aisles and outdoor storage areas shall be paved with asphalt or concrete. All items stored must be in operable condition. Daily hours of public access shall be limited to 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Non-glare lighting shall be provided for the site. Signage shall meet the standards of the Cadillac zoning ordinance. Provided, however, no signs shall be placed on site fencing or storage buildings, except for individual building addresses. Any waste removed from recreational vehicles shall be processed pursuant to applicable state and city requirements. No dumping of waste to the ground shall be permitted." Excuse me. So there were a number of items proposed in the ordinance that would hopefully aim to keep at a higher-end storage facility. The one trouble that always comes up is, over time, how do you enforce this ordinance? Depending on how much of, if it was phased, or... They have not really produced any market demand studies that would tell us that the demand is there as they say it is. If the facility were built for a storage facility and say there was no demand for the intended market, I would consider that they would probably ask that it could be used for general storage purposes. We've just formed and seated a full board of the West Side Corridor Improvement Authority, and we're in the process of undertaking a development plan for the West Side. And one of the things that becomes apparent right away is that there's not a great deal of land to produce the desired effect that is out there. And certainly, you wouldn't want to entertain a use that's not tourism-related. Now, in this case, we have a case where they're removing something that's already tourist-related and stated as acceptable, and then substituting it with a different use, which we don't really know what the demand is for that use. And the other issue would be is, how would we ultimately know what was stored in the units? The outdoor storage units, we could look in the fence and say, oh, it's limited to those three things that we said. But with the other storage, I don't know that we would have a good way to know what was being stored there. I could not justify taking that limited space and using it for household storage when we have so many areas in the city that would be a better location for that, that wouldn't work against trying to create the West Side as a tourism destination. So, you know, it's not a clear-cut issue. On the one hand, they have steered the requested change to tourism use, and that was the only way I would agree to bring it to the Planning Commission. On the other hand, there's issues of really not knowing what the demand is, really not knowing, quite sure how we would ultimately regulate it or know what was going into those units. So that's kind of what's going on with the proposal. There was also a PowerPoint, which I did not develop. The PowerPoint was put together by the applicants. Unfortunately, one of the applicants is, I guess, in a COVID restriction period right now and could not attend. And the other applicant, one is Michael Blackmere, the other one is Brad Dornboss, who would be his partner. They put this PowerPoint together. I could just slowly go through it, and you can read some of the highlights. They hoped that this would help in lieu of their absence tonight. So I'll just slowly go through it, maybe every 30 seconds or so, so you can read the slides. The first thing they called into play is they wanted to show some consistency with the master plan. And with that connection, they call attention to the fact that it says it's the goal of the plan to rejuvenate the Cadillac West Resort District to its former status as a leading destination point for tourists. Key elements for the district's future would include, and then they highlight number five, businesses whose operations and facilities are conducive to the growth of tourism and synergistic to other district businesses. And you can look at some of the other objectives of the district. And so Cadillac West self-storage, they're claiming it would be an asset to the community, would be low impact on the area and environment, low traffic, clean, nice-looking, built, look great for years to come, cleans up area that people have RV, campers, boat, and recreational vehicles outside their homes. Asset to the community as it clears up yards, helps property values. Pontoon boats are now 100,000-plus luxury craft. Owners do not want to stretch wrap in a field. And property tax revenue versus impact to a community. We already covered this, so I won't spend time with that. This shows you the general layout tonight. I don't think we have to be concerned with the layout of the site design. That would come much later if an application were submitted, if this were approved as a use that could be considered. But it gives you some idea, you know, the area that would be used for the facility.
Okay.
And then I think they are attempting to show what the current distribution of self-storage facilities are in the Cadillac area. It should be mentioned that I do believe that not very far from this site, another storage facility is going in as we sit here tonight. I don't know what the timeframe for its opening is, but I believe work on it has already started. And I think that existing building on the site was actually going to be used for storage as well. So one of the buildings would be complete because it exists, and the other ones will be being constructed. So that's another thing to consider in this as well.
That's just down the road, you say, John, at Bill Oliver's place there? Is that where the other one is going in?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
No. No, but from a Cadillac West perspective.
Yeah.
And there's quite a bit of detail here.
People don't understand city, right? There's going to be a lot of storage out there. We'll talk that.
I think they're highlighting a location at 11540 West Watergate Road in Cadillac. I haven't, I'm not familiar with that facility. But they're identifying the different unit sizes that are available at that facility and the different price ranges. And I think that's just another aerial photo of the storage facility. But that is the information that I've been supplied to present. I think it's a challenging question before you tonight. It's hard to say, you know, I think it's one of those ones where you have to just look at the district intent and say, it meets that, or it's an equal or better situation than what we have now, or it's not. The best I could do is at least get it started down the path of being oriented towards recreation support and tourism support. And you can, I can go back to the actual ordinance itself, and you could go through that list. And so the options are many. You could choose to reject the change of that addition. You could accept it as presented. You could accept it with changes. Or you could approve it as is and recommend it to the council. This would obviously have to go before the city council as well. And if it did clear all those pathways, then the next step would be they would file a special use application, and then you could start digging into the merits of the proposal and would have a chance to dig into the details of how it was going to be run, what it was going to look like, all those types of factors. And with that, that's all I have on the general presentation. I'd be happy to entertain discussion, or if you want talks amongst yourselves, whatever your preference would be.
Was there any communications from anyone out that way, John?
No, I have not received any communications.
We need to do public comment first, though, right? You have to open it for public comment first, or it's special. There's not going to be much.
Yeah, you could close the public hearing.
You could open and close that really quick.
Okay. All right, for formality's sake. So at this time, we will go ahead and open the public hearing here on the proposed zoning ordinance, special land use here in a TS2 district. Anyone in our viewing audience or anywhere is free to give us any input.
Don't do an all-talk at once.
No. Okay, seeing no comments or anything from anyone, at this time, I'll just go ahead and close the public hearing because we have no input. Okay, there. Formalities.
Thank you.
Perfect. So at this time, floor, we can discuss. John, I'm probably getting the cart before the horse, but I thought I skimmed somewhere in stuff that you had sent us about. And obviously, the unit behind us that was out on 55, his is all gravel and is not asphalt or concrete. I thought I skimmed something about that, or would that be part of, if this moves forward, he'd have to give us a site plan with that information?
Well, right now, the way the use is written, it would require it to be paved. In the past, we've allowed suddenly way and timeframes for paving. So, I mean, you could require it to be paved from the outset, or you could allow them, you know, a year or some other timeframe if they wanted to get some revenue production. I think you would have the flexibility to do that. But I think we do need to stay with the pavement requirement.
Okay, so just kind of thinking out loud here a little bit. First, I don't know why they included that picture. Totally irrelevant. Misaki County, Ridgeland Township knows something.
It's a nice one, though. Have you been out there?
It is, but it's completely irrelevant.
Agreed.
But, you know, just so I clearly understand, we're not, we would actually not specifically talking about this project, but it would open up, and I think that's probably the bigger question is, if this was in place, this now applies to any TS2 district.
Yeah, once you open Pandora's box.
Right, but, you know. If you look at the district, there's requirements in here that requires it to be X amount of feet off of the highways. So some of the small parcels that might be in that district could not then have this use considered because they wouldn't have the depth necessary to, you know, to get off of the state highway. And they also, in addition to having to meet these, they have to meet the general special use standards, which is compatibility with the surrounding area and so forth. So if there was ever a case where they could apply, you would always have the option to turn down the use based on incompatibility with surrounding uses.
I would like to just talk about the fact that we have gotten the West Corridor Improvement Committee off the ground. And so discussions are starting, you know, we're putting everything in place to get that group going. And to your point earlier, the work that we're going to do is going to have to happen with a very limited amount of space that's available out in Cadillac West. So if we really want to improve it from a tourist attraction standpoint, you know, I would like us to just have some discussion about, you know, in my head, I was sitting here thinking, you know, most people don't understand where the city ends and where the townships start. So you mentioned the new units that are already going up out there. So there's going to be more storage, and it is going to be out in that area. Does it make more sense to encourage these developers to focus on something that could happen within that West Corridor Improvement District that would keep it more of a tourist attraction or an opportunity for activities rather than storing things? I'd just like to have some discussion about that.
It's dead space once you have storage.
Yes.
Also, I'm assuming that people have contacted Mike with some concern or some need that we need a place to put the stuff that's sitting out in the open, and so...
That is what he's reported.
That, yeah.
You may want him to, in some way, quantify demand. And one, I forgot to mention too, one of your options tonight too, other than taking definitive action, you could also table this item to a future meeting if you wanted to collect more data. So that's an option as well.
Yeah, and I just want to, I just also want to say, by my saying, I would just like us to talk about it and think about it. It's not that I don't greatly appreciate everything that this developer's been doing and the fact that they want to improve the area and provide things that people are asking for. But I just want us to be thoughtful in, you know, what we want to see out in that area. And I think what we want to see is probably more than that land space is going to provide us. So we need to be very careful about how we choose to use what area we have available.
So, John, once again, looking at the city map, Sunnyside, which comes along and comes through, how does that little piece of land there, that must be right on the very, very edge of the city?
Yes. Yes, very much so. Yes. In fact, the Pines. The Pine is actually, the building is split, I think, between the township and the city.
Actually, you're right. It does split the building, Cherry Grove. But it looks like the baseball fields are all in Cadillac.
Okay, yeah, I thought the line went that, followed behind those lots. Makes sense.
But there is not a great deal of vacant property, to the mayor's point, to create the vision that people want. There's very little vacant space, and so a lot of it would require considering redevelopment projects in many cases, like what's proposed here. And so, yeah, there's limited ability to create what the desired goal is.
And I guess I also would refer back to our last meeting that we had with the West Corridor Improvement Group. The fact that there is a vision for, say, the strip mall out there, you know, if, you know, there is some vision, but it would require the whole strip mall to be taken down. In this instance, there's nothing on that property right now, so it wouldn't mean taking something down to build something new. If, it's kind of like the horse before the cart or the chicken and the egg.
Right. No, that's a very valid point. And I... And I, I struggled with this issue, you know, I, once, once you have limited space, and you have two or more uses that you're considering, and, and all, and they all in some way have to do with tourism, then it becomes a weighted thing, is this better than this, is this better than this, and so you're looking across the board at what the ultimate vision is, and what does it take to get you there, and, and will any of these uses further your cause better than the others?
What about the Cadillac West Corridor Group? Have, are they aware of this?
We haven't discussed this.
I guess my question is, do they have any ideas for the use of the property?
Not at this point, but, but I bring it up because, you know, there's, there's going to be those discussions over there, so maybe, you know, like John said, maybe it gets tabled here, and then we talk about, you know, maybe he introduces it to the West Corridor Group, and, you know, maybe that's a part of, maybe that becomes one of the first projects to think about for that group.
I did, I did offer them to attend the last Corridor Improvement Authority meeting to casually introduce the project, but that was declined. They didn't take me up on that offer, and so we could also extend the invitation again.
Yeah.
Do the ball diamond thing, is that just falling off the planet? I mean, in the day, it used to be big stuff.
I'm just gonna say.
With teams and stuff, but...
I don't know, they were playing out there this summer, I, it, I don't think they play like they once did, you know?
There's several makes to leave.
Right, yeah.
Well, according to Mike, it's...
I think the players, it's not a revenue generator anymore.
It, it's slowed down quite a bit, according to Mike.
Everybody got old.
Right, that's true.
Except for me, absolutely.
That's true, but I, you know, I just think that, just because I'm sitting on both of them, and so I'm hearing different discussions in both places, and I also listen to folks in the community, and it's like, you know, looking for things for young people to do, or, you know, a skating rink, or, you know, something activity-wise that they could create out there that would generate revenue, but it would also fill a need in the community, and it would be attractive to tourists who come, you know, and I don't know if the skating rink is the answer, but that's just a thought I had, that's something we don't have anymore, and I often hear that brought up, but maybe it could be a combination of things.
Yeah, well, since a skating rink burned down...
Not, no, tongue in cheek there, buddy. Yeah, 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 and I just throw that out there.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah.
The other thing that's happening kinda concurrently with all this is that we're in the process of trying to finalize a draft of the new zoning ordinance, and there'll probably be a new zoning district for this area that will still stress tourism, and also some support for year-round retail for the area residents, but we'll, we'll have to undertake what the permitted uses are by right and by special use permit, probably within the next month, we'll have to write something up for that. And so getting some really good feedback on this now would help guide whether that should go into the rewrite of the ordinance in the near future.
I think if we made the decision tonight, it'd be kicking the feet out of a bunch of those people. I mean, their, their whole idea, their whole means is to change this, or build it, or do whatever they're going to do to make this a better area. I would, personally, I would shelve this, or table it, and let those people talk about it, see and think about it, then maybe come back here and talk to us about it.
I think that's a great idea.
I'd go along with that, too.
I just don't feel it'd be fair to do something without their, their knowledge.
So is the, what's the connection, I'm, I'm looking at the Cadillac West Resort District that was in here, and then the committee that you're talking about, is that, explain that, what, there a committee that references the goals of the Cadillac West Resort District?
That's correct, yeah. John can maybe explain it better, but for so long, it's, we've been looking for improvement out there, but we didn't have this authority seated, and we didn't have a charter, and we didn't have, so he can...
Essentially creating a DDA for the West Side, it functions...
We have a DDA here.
In all practical matters, is the DDA for the West Side, it's not a DDA, they have to call it something else, but it, it works off the same tax increment financing process, and then you, you have the tax increment finance plan and the development plan, and what the board is working on is the development side of that plan, the financial plan they'll also approve, but that's mostly gonna be put together by our finance officer, in terms of trying to predict what the future revenues would be that come in off of those properties out there.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, in saying this, but, you know, depending on what they ultimately decide to do out there, there could be grants available, there could be brownfield redevelopment dollars available to them?
That's exactly right.
To be able to help them change that property into something that will generate the revenue and fill the need in the community.
Right, brownfields available, depending on what the use is, if it were mixed use, it might be possible to even be looking at MEDC money, depending on if we could qualify that district, don't wanna say that's for certain, but they usually like to work in downtown, downtown areas, but I think other formal districts might be a possibility. We have a match on Main Street grant thing that we're looking at trying to apply for right now, and we can do one grant for the downtown, and we can do one, one grant for the West Side, and so there's an ability for one business to get up to $25,000 if, if they have a project ready to roll within the next six months. So we're in the process of doing outreach the last couple days, and for the next couple days, to see if we can't locate a business that's in that position, and try to get that financial help out to at least two of the businesses, and that's coming through the MEDC. And that also stems from the fact that we took the time and the effort to become redevelopment-ready certified, and there's other opportunities later, possibly from community development block grant, because we were able to certify ourselves as a low-income community, so we've opened as many doors as we possibly can to, to attract money to assist with redevelopment and development.
Could you give me an explanation of the sub-note of no storage of general household goods shall be permitted inside storage units?
Well, what I mean by that is couches, end tables, lamps, lawn feeders. I mean, yeah, I mean, those can go, those can go literally anywhere.
Drive around, there's some in some yards.
Yeah.
Ranges, bridges.
A lot of it goes back to, though, how you're gonna regulate, how you're gonna control it, you know, if it's a closed door.
Right, you can't ask them to open the door to...
The only way you can do that is by, you have to have some kind of camera or something that the city can watch, and make sure that stuff doesn't go in, and I'm not pressed for that to happen.
Right.
Yeah, think about it, that's the only way you can do it.
Yeah, that, that, as I meant...
We don't have staffing to do that.
As I mentioned in my memo, that is the biggest challenge, is, we can observe the outdoor area easily, it's the indoor storage, we just wouldn't have much opportunity to ever know how it was being used.
I think, are we still discussing?
Sure.
Or do you, can we make a motion?
If everybody's done discussing...
Is there anything else anybody needs to say, or would like to say, Dale?
No.
I know your first time here, but your opinion matters to us.
The only thing that comes to my mind is if we were to have a boat dealer, or a snowmobile dealer, want to come into Cadillac West, are we putting any limitations on them? Because that's a big part of their business, too. Storage, shrink wrapping, keeping things behind their building, I mean, similar to J and D, would we be forcing those people out of the city limits?
No, I think that would be a different, a different use, they would actually have sale, sales, yeah.
Okay, yeah, as long as we don't put handcuffs on them, by thinking this way.
Well, I still agree with the mayor's comment, that, no, it's things for tourists to do, oh, let's go hang out at the storage units, that's not something for tourists to go to.
Depends on what's going on out there.
I mean, you know, think, think completely out of the box, you know, think about, you know, spaces out there where you could set up an outdoor amphitheater, that you could have, you know, events out there, and, and that's way out there, I realize, but, I mean, there's just, there's so many things that just should be talked, could be talked about, to create something unique.
That's why you need to talk to your group that's there.
Yeah.
Because they may have ideas already.
Right.
And once you...
Because it's a pretty space back there.
Yeah, they are. Once you put concrete on it, it ain't changing.
Yeah, no, it's a really pretty space back there, and I would hate to see it all concrete.
Now you got more runoff into the quote swamish area.
But I really think that now that we have the West Corridor Improvement Authority in place, that, like you said earlier, let them have the opportunity to have these discussions before it comes here.
That's true. If we hamstring, so to speak, and we do something here, and I was on that board, I'd say, have a nice day.
Exactly. You did this, and we didn't get any input.
Yeah, so you don't need us.
Right.
My opinion.
Good point.
So you wanna make a motion to table this, until the commission can look at it?
That could be a motion, yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's a motion.
I'll second that one.
Boy, we're busy tonight, you know?
I know, just like that.
Yeah, I'm glad Kane, we could still be sitting here.
I said, did our homework.
I, I think everybody has under the same impression, same opinion.
Yep, okay.
It's passed.
Are we ready?
Yep. Abby's like, no, no, it's not yet.
Are you ready to vote? Philkins?
Yes.
Bosher?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Putvin?
Yes.
And Rice?
Yes.
Now, that motion is to table this to allow the commission to look at it, correct?
Correct. Would you like them to come back with a recommendation first, or what am I ready?
I'd like to have them go back and chat with us.
Just to let them discuss this?
Yeah, I mean, or...
Also, how much, there is really a need for that with people with enough high-end water vehicles, they wanna store.
Well, I, you know, right, and, and maybe it's after the commission has the opportunity, Shannon Hamner is actually the chair, and so she could be invited to this meeting.
I would say so. Yeah, I just want them to look at it and say, well, that's a good idea, or what about this?
And that we're including them.
And just to clarify, when you talk about them, you're talking about the committee?
The committee, yeah. The authority, yeah.
Yes.
The West, what is it called again?
The West Corridor Improvement Authority.
Okay.
What are some options?
And that way, the, the developer, the person interested in this application is on that board too, so he'll have the direct, he'll have the, he'll have the direct feedback.
He should've mentioned that, but yeah.
Mike is?
He is.
Good.
Along with, along with other, other property owners from out in that area, so...
John, maybe just a thought of information for that committee would be to identify, if this was adopted, what other properties would that potentially affect that, you know, even, even with an existing building that says, well, this isn't, this isn't income generating, and I wanna tear down and do this, because this isn't specific only to this project, you change the...
I could evaluate that.
Yeah, you change the whole...
I'll look at the existing buildings and see if inadvertently we could be opening up some properties that we wouldn't want to.
Right. Good.
Alright, we good on this subject?
Yep.
New business, nothing, old business, nothing, board member comments? Any ready for trick or treat? Any board member comments? I don't know. Try to have fun.
We're always ready for trick or treat.
I know, alright.
You don't have to wait till Halloween.
And no, next Wednesday, the city is, or the downtown is...
The downtown is actually having their Halloween celebrations, so it's free to everybody in the public, come on downtown and see what's going on, and there's usually a lot of kids.
Kids are already gearing up.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we don't miss out.
Yeah.
And I already asked Mr. Wallace, there were no communications, and we have no public, or public comment, and we have another business, and if everybody's really happy, we'll be...
Sure, it's awesome.
Good job.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.